Okay, the board is back from recess and we'll resume our April 8th, 2019 business meeting with agenda item 9.03 regarding student realignment. Dan, if you'd bring up the presentation, please. Okay, so leave it on that first slide, please. So a couple items to note, that this past week, we had Matthew Cropper's organization update all of the planning blocks to the 2018-19, the current attendance numbers. Previously, the maps, because the committee started their work with the 2017-2018 school year, that's what the data on the maps was. We were working with the totals when we presented the starting number from the recommended, the committee's recommendation. We were using those numbers for 2018-19 because we had those in a separate file. The maps were not updated. We wanted to get everything in sync so that you all, the community, could see the updated maps. So this presentation will use, and Dan, if you'll go to the next slide. If you see the red note on the top, the data on the maps remain 17-18. Those were all captured before the maps were updated. The data in the text on the right side is now 18-19. We just wanted to show you, we're talking apples to apples as far as the areas, but when it comes to the numbers, we've updated them. A lot of areas collectively did not change much because there were more growth, and I'll use Skybrook as an example. There was more growth in Skybrook, but the other areas that were being moved to Odell Schools along the Poplar Tent Corridor dropped a fair amount in numbers. So that's where you'll see the net difference. When we go to every slide, you'll see the changes. Mr. Schumaker updated what we call his calculator, the spreadsheet, so that we can include or not include certain planning blocks when we're talking about realignment. So I'd like to start going through this. We'll attack it, I guess we'll call it, one by one as we have done previously, so that you can see the numbers that have changed. So if you go to the next slide. So the committee recommendation for the high schools show the attached percentages. These committee recommendation totals are 2018-19 numbers. They always have been. They were adjusted early on. You can see that we're a little bit low on capacity, attendance at Concord High School based on committee's recommendations. The rest of the schools fairly well fall in line, provided we take the committee's recommendation. The next slides will start showing the variations from the committee's recommendation. So if you go to the next slide, Dan. I moved this slide up in the presentation just to help us recall where if we accepted everything that the board members suggested, some was from public comments and whatnot, if we accepted everything at the high school level, we have Cox Mill High School at a very high percentage, and Northwest Cabarrus High School at a very low percentage, and Concord High School still remains fairly low. So let's go back to our next slide. Keeping the Concord Mills Boulevard, the west side of Concord Mills where it meets Chrisdenberry, students, there are now 84 students in that area. Like I said, again, the text on the right is updated, and I've made the note at the bottom of every slide where it says the data on the maps remains from 17-18. All data in text is now 18-19 for comparison purposes. So Planning Block 8, keeping the high school students who are currently at Cox Mill High School, having them stay at Cox Mill High School. They will move from middle school, stay at their same school, Fehr for Elementary, and they will move from middle school to provide some relief to Harris Road Middle School. So board members, are we still in concurrence with moving this area, or keeping this area at Cox Mill High School?
Domino.
Okay, anybody else against keeping these students at their current school? Okay, so that's basically a six to one.
Can you give us your explanation?
First one.
This is a domino effect on everything else. We moved the middle school, we moved the elementary school across, we have a capacity issue at Cox Mill High School. If you can reduce the 81 from Cox Mill, it gives that some relief, and you can actually consider some of the other requests that we've had.
And that may be something that's, will eventually get moved, but we do have the challenge of taking children from basically Dorida and Cox Mill Boulevard and moving them across to Robinson, especially when there's auto fair, race weekends, and so on multiple times a year. So they're getting into that traffic. The less we have to do that, especially with children in their individual vehicles, I think the better it is overall. Okay, so we're, I'll say by consensus, we're okay with moving that one. The next slide. This is the area north of 73 where there was a request from these four specific planning blocks. The committee's recommendation was that they move to Northwest Cabarrus High School, and these four specific planning blocks that the numbers are within the black circle have requested to stay at Cox Mill High School. Now, there were several challenges here, and this was, I'm gonna mess up the neighborhood names. Is it Wellington Chase? I don't have that sheet in front of me. Barry, can you help me with the neighborhood names?
Let's see, there was like Pelham Point.
Can you turn the mic on, please?
There was Pelham Point, Kingsway at Waterford, I believe, hold on, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Pelham Point, Wellington Chase, Kingsway at Waterford, at Rock, oh, Kingsway, Waterford at Rocky River. I think that's, that's all.
And you'll see.
Those are the ones that I wrote down.
Yeah. You'll see later on, and you probably recall in some portion, that the top of this segment of the county going up towards Mooresville Highway, which is not far above these planning blocks that fit on this screen, those are likely going to move to Northwest Cabarrus Middle School and High School. So when we look at a jagged, and for example, Planning Block 52 would need to come down or go up through other neighborhoods to get to Cox Mill High School. And it's not as close as it seems. It is actually 5.9 miles, which is on that slide. So that becomes a very, a very jagged and uneven way of making a realignment, and we can't move any amount of students because of Cox Mill's capacity. So they are actually further away, about double the distance than the kids on Concord Mills Boulevard are. So are we okay with leaving this at the committee recommendation?
I mean, once again, since you did, if you're not moving Planning Block 8, you don't have the space. If you did move Planning Block 8, there was a scenario where this group was able to remain in Cox Mill.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the recommendations that the committee abandoned. Yeah. And I think because they couldn't get a clear line in this area because of how the developments have been. And to Mrs. Grimsley's point at a few of the meetings, there's still land to be developed in here, so we need to account for that.
Right, but there was another impact of moving this, and that would, you would lower the attendance at Northwest Cabarrus to 66 percent. So the other part was, is you actually reduced the attendance at Northwest Cabarrus to a very low number.
So similar to your concerns about Concord High School, we can't leave Northwest Cabarrus High School.
Yeah, like I said, there's a domino effect here, so.
Okay, so on this particular slide, slide number six, and I did put page numbers in the lower right now. Slide number six, do we leave this as the committee recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anybody kind of agree?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, that one.
You're okay with that?
With that one, but I'm still, we're still kind of leaving, are we leaving that Concord Mills like it is, or are we still gonna keep it?
If you go to the next slide, it has the summary.
Consensus was you're keeping Concord Mills?
So Cox Mill High School, in the base option from the committee, was 1,452 or 87 percent. Planning Block 8 added puts in 84 students. If we move those from Northwest Cabarrus, it's 106. It really becomes an either or, and the Planning Block 8 is closer and it's a cleaner line. Okay, so we're, in that area, we're going to go with Planning Block 8 only. Okay. Slide 8, please. The change of the high school recommendation to move to West Cabarrus. This area actually dropped slightly with the 18-19 numbers, and I think that's attributed to this being a mature area, and I'll say much more mature than Skybrook. This is a 19, what Carolyn, probably 1980s development area? Early 80s?
Late 70s.
Huh?
Late 70s.
Yeah.
Late 70s, I mean, it's old.
Yeah.
I thought you said.
I can still picture what was around when I moved here 30 some years ago.
We don't have three subdivisions out there.
Yeah. Okay, so this area includes Tamar, Freedom Acres, both phases, Quahalo, and I think that's all the subdivisions. And board members, if you'll note, and this is the old Planning Block, but if you look at the current maps, that Planning Block 93 was split, that was one of our requests to Cropper, so that Taylor Glen is in the Planning Block next door, Planning Block 92, just in case any of that land would ever be developed in there. So there's no children in Taylor Glen right now, obviously, but we wanted to make that clear where the line was drawn. So the suggestion here is to move these to West Cabarrus High School. They are about 3.1 miles from West Cabarrus High School, straight down Weddington Road, probably the easiest commute of any place. Their current school is Fehr-Winkler-Robinson. The future would be Fehr-Winkler and West Cabarrus.
Committee recommendation?
That's not the committee recommendation.
What's that?
That is not the committee recommendation.
No, the committee recommendation is that they go to Robinson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is our adjustment to align to Pitt School Road, to align to the edge of Weddington Road where it meets Pitt School Road.
I don't know, I think it makes sense because of the distance involved.
And they don't have to go out, see, they were gonna have to cross over 29, and this, and then they hadn't taken it out to Pitt School, which they should have taken it out to Pitt School. And again, these children will not have to go over 29, a major intersection. And again, this subdivision was, excuse me.
This subdivision was a mature, we don't, we're old, we don't have any more children.
Well, you've gone through two rounds already.
Yeah, we've already gone through two rounds, but it is a mature, and we don't have any more children in that area.
So we are going to add these in, and alter the committee's recommendation?
Yep.
Okay, so that one is good. Slide 9. This is the area that is the Zimosa Acres Terrace Band, Mistletoe Ridge, Cambridge Commons, and a few streets that are not in a subdivision. Off of Highway 73, both sides, up against 85, which is your kind of blue stripe going across the middle. So the, this was not, the committee's recommendation is shown on the map. We had discussion that said, move this area to West Cabarrus to be with everyone else because that's probably where they're going to end up once we do the middle school realignment. And as note, none of those streets come out to Poplar Tent. That is a landlocked, crazy how they built that subdivision, but everything has to come out to 73 there. So the current school process is Boger, Northwest Cabarrus Middle, Northwest Cabarrus High School. The future in the, if we adopt this change, is Boger, Northwest Cabarrus Middle, and West Cabarrus High School. The Winkler Middle cannot handle these students yet, and Weddington Hills Elementary cannot handle the students from Boger. So we would also drop the elementary and the middle school a bit too much, and the high school by moving this. These are 107 students total, and at our last meeting, we discussed leaving it as is for right now, and then look at the growth or the numbers on West Cabarrus when the middle school is built, and then possibly making the shift. So are we still at that decision? And I just, I want, what's that?
We are accepting the committee's recommendation for the short term.
Yes.
With a proviso to.
Yeah, and the committee went back and forth on this area in their recommendation. And I just wanted to share with the Skybrook neighborhood, I used to live in that area, that Planning Block 249, lived there for 28 years, built my house there. When we were not the city of Concord, we were still out in the county, as people like to call us. We were, we were the last subdivision before, and we were built on farmland, like a lot of the neighborhoods. I lived in that neighborhood, like I said, for 28 years. When we were going to be redistricted to Boger Elementary, when it came online, I thought my neighbors were going to kill me. I couldn't go out and rake leaves, and Holly and Carolyn, you were on the board then. I couldn't rake leaves without two cars popping in my driveway. Then all of a sudden, this went on for three or four weeks, all of a sudden, got a phone call and said, it was a parent from Zimosa who was friends with a couple ladies in my neighborhood, they were all the PTO officers at Wyancott Elementary, because we were a historic Wyancott neighborhood. We had the first valedictorian of Northwest Cabarrus High School in our neighborhood. I mean, we were historic as far as where we went to school. All of a sudden, got the phone call and said, you know, we think we want to go to Boger. We're gonna take over the PTO there. And I was like, wow, you just reduced my headache and stress. But the moral of that story is, sometimes it's not the kids who have the challenges with moving, it's the parents getting used to a new idea. And they got used to the new idea, and they have been avid supporters of Boger Elementary ever since. So it does happen to us as board members. We have two board members in this realignment process this year. They're not pushing back. We came to agreement with how things could work, but it's happened to all of us. So just want to share that for you, that we've lived through the pain personally with our own residences. Okay, so we will keep slide number nine for this area, this, I'll say jet down off of 73, as the committee recommendation.
Well, excuse me, but didn't the committee, did the committee say, did the committee come up with Boger Northwest-Northwest, or did the committee come up with Boger Northwest-West Cabarrus?
The committee came up with Boger Northwest-Northwest.
Okay, so, but we're coming up with Boger Northwest-West Cabarrus.
Yes, that was suggestions of a few board members.
Well, that's what, yes, that was what, there were some recommendations for us to investigate, moving them from Northwest High School to West Cabarrus. But in light of what happens, I think, to Northwest and, and all, because then, again, as part of that depopulation, it drives the numbers, that would drive the numbers down to 74 percent, so.
Yeah, it was getting them too low, so.
So can I ask?
Well, should we keep them? I mean.
Because what are the numbers at Northwest now?
If we take them out. We'll go to the next slide, Ms. Carpenter.
Oh, okay, go to the next.
Your one, your one question ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Harrison?
I'll follow.
Microphone, okay. Okay, so if we go to slide 10. Northwest Cabarrus with the recommended option has 1103. If we move these children out, that's 107 being removed. In combination, which we've already agreed we would not do, the north area of 73 that we just discussed, where it was those four jagged kind of planning blocks, to keep them at Cox Mill, that would mean 213 moving out of Northwest. Northwest can't sustain that, it goes down to 66 percent. So we've already removed the move to Cox Mill out of that. If we take the extra 107 out, we're somewhere in the middle. You can see taking both areas out was 66-42, keeping them both in is 82.31. I think we need to go with the 82.31 percent.
Right. And in both scenarios, either one, if you left 45, if you'd let 45 go to Cox Mill, those planning blocks, or if you'd let this one stay, go to West Cabarrus, either one of these divided, you know, differently, it would have been 74 percent. So you still would have driven Northwest Cabarrus to the lowest number in the district as far as, and now the students attending it.
So Madam Chair, can you clarify me on how we're going to reassess this decision tonight in a few years? Give me some additional information about how we might.
I don't have my crystal ball here tonight, but.
I just want to be able to track it in a few years that we need to make adjustments.
I really think when, when we know for sure when we will get the middle school, we have an idea where it will be, when we know for sure, and we start that realignment process, I think that's when we start needing to look at how the students will be pulled, will also have a better, for the middle school attendance, will also have a better idea if the state legislature is going to continue this unfunded mandate, lower elementary school class size. There's a lot of things we, you know, we will know in two years, and hopefully be wiser for it, so. I don't think we'll revisit this unless there's some drastic change that would happen to West Cabarrus that we need to populate it higher. I don't think we'd revisit it very soon, but. Okay, so Northwest, we are in agreement. We are not moving either of those areas, or say, we're not taking them away from Northwest. We're leaving them both in Northwest, is that correct? Okay, the next slide, 11. This was the area off of 49 is the blue stripe coming up off the right corner. That's Highway 49. This is the area west of 49. Their current school is Pitt School Road, Hickory Ridge Middle and High. The committee's recommendation was Pitts-Freeze and West Cabarrus. This is really the far stretch of West Cabarrus. They're actually closer to Robinson, and with the children currently at Pitt School Road Elementary, it aligns better with Robinson, and eventually, I don't know if they would stay at Freeze, or if they'll go to the new middle school, depends on how we align that. So this is 83 students, and this is the, what I'll call the beginning of kind of repopulating Robinson because we took Planning Block 8 out of Robinson. And this area was one that I'll say there was a pretty solid agreement last meeting.
Yeah, but if you left Planning Block 8, you wouldn't have to do this.
That's true, but we're closing the gap on distances. And that was the, and the committee reviewed that, and they abandoned it.
Okay, I understand, distances.
Well, you closed that gap, aid is closing the gap too, and as you mentioned, if we did that for Cox Mill, we were, I mean, that, that was a shorter distance, and we're not putting those children through race traffic and things like that.
Yeah. The one in Planning Block 8 is hard to argue. Those kids aren't on the 85 end, they're on the Dorida end of Cox Mill Boulevard. Like I said, they're, they go across the street, and they're on Chrisdenberry Road, so. Okay, so we're going to move these to Robinson as stated on here? Can I get some nods, thumbs up, whatever you guys want to give?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, slide 12.
Was that a do that?
I believe so. You okay, Mr. Walter? With that one?
Which one?
The one we just did, moving to Robinson.
Yeah, my preference would be to keep the middle school and the high school boundaries the same for feeder zones, but if this is all we can get, then yes.
Yeah, right now, middle schools, we're tight on space, so.
Or not on Concord Middle School, has plenty of room.
But they can't go from Concord Middle School from here.
I'm not talking, I'm not talking about this area, I'm talking about alternative.
Sorry, he went to the next slide, I wasn't there yet. Okay, so slide 12. So this is a new recommendation from the last meeting. We were looking to get all of the high schools at 80 percent or better projected, and this particular area, through some discussion with Mr. Walter and Mr. Schumaker, these students are already at Concord. So if you see on the top, they're at Weddington Hills Elementary, a mixture of Winkler and Concord Middle School and Concord High School. This is the high school recommendation. We're saying, let's leave them at Concord High School, and that helps to balance out and gets Concord High School back to 81 percent. So just as a geographic reference, this is off of McGill on the east side of Poplar Tent. So if you look at that kind of white line, let's see, where you see the PB 270, go up to where there's, the arrows kind of pointing towards the white line across the upper part of that yellow section, that's actually McGill. These roads off of McGill, where it comes down into 270, that's a dead end. It does not go out. If you've ever been on that road, you'll even see the sign, no exit, or whatever that, the little notation is there. So, and I agree, I would like to see those middle schools balanced out, but I don't want to change middle school right now when we know we're gonna have a serious middle school adjustment coming up. So I put the note on there, what's the board's pleasure, you know, that there were 19 middle school kids in 270, if we want to move them to Concord Middle. We weren't really affecting Concord Middle for anything else. And this would also be a change that was not, you know, previously advertised. So let's focus on the high school first. Are we okay with having these, the children from these three planning blocks stay at Concord High School?
Yes.
Okay, yes? Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Grimsley? Okay, do we want to address middle school? I think there's such a mixture here, because right now, 279 on the top, this is, this is like that four corners section that we had on 49, you know, where multiple high schools converge in one point. 279 is on the top there, outside the circle, is actually Northwest-Northwest. 270 is, what was it, Rob? It's Concord High School and Weddington, no, Winkler, and then I think the bottom one's Concord Middle. So, like I said, we'll, we'll help clean up the middle school lines when we address middle school only. Okay, I'm gonna mark this one okay for high school, and no change for middle school right Okay, slide 13 is the summary of the West Cabarrus changes. So the move to Concord High School, Planning Block 347, 463, and 270 is what we just reviewed, we're okay on that one. The move from West Cabarrus to Robinson, that is the area on Weddington Road, Tamar, Freedom Acres, Quahalo, we were okay with that one. The move from Northwest, I'm sorry, the move, yeah, moving Northwest to West Cabarrus, we declined that, that was the south of 70, or the south of 85 area with Zimosa Acres. That was the south of seventy, or the south of eighty-five area with the most acres. We declined that one. And the move to Robinson, the eighty-three with Planning Block Sixteen, One-forty-five, One-forty-six, that was the Highway forty-nine area, and we accepted that one. So we accepted the first, second, and fourth, and declined the third, is that correct?
Well, it, now wait a minute, it says from Robinson, sixty-four, add. But you didn't add Tamar to Robinson, though.
No, this is from Robinson. That's why it says from Robinson to West Cabarrus, that's in the title.
Oh, okay, so, but it, so you're not adding them to Robinson?
No, it's from, that's why I said it's coming out of Robinson.
Okay, okay.
And into West Cabarrus.
Okay.
Okay, we're in agreement on those?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then slide fourteen. This is the area off of Highway forty-nine of the county line. So the county line is that pink vertical going slightly up to the left. The blue line right under the arrow is Highway forty-nine. And this is Valhalla, what other areas are there, David? Do you remember?
Valhalla is-
Boundless Reserve, Timber Forest, Valhalla.
Whitefield Manor.
Whitefield Manor, yep.
Okay. So the current schools are Pitt School Road, Hickory Ridge Middle, Hickory Ridge High. The future, based on this adjustment, and this evens it out against forty-nine, and this, this area did previously go to Robinson. The future is Pitt School Road, Hickory Ridge Middle for now, until that middle school for Robinson is built, and then Robinson. So this is basically preparing to have the line at forty-nine for the middle schools as well. So, and this is the area where we heard from neighbors on both sides of Morehead Road and expressed that they wanted to stay together. I think they'd rather, would have rather all stayed at Hickory Ridge, but that doesn't help Hickory Ridge at all in their growth.
So this group goes to Hickory Ridge Middle?
Yes, they would still go to Hickory Ridge Middle for the next couple of years.
Yep.
Yeah, and then I think, you know, we can be pretty certain based on proximity that they'll go to the new middle school. So do we accept this change?
But then that whole section will all be going to Robinson, is that correct?
Yes. Everything kind of north of forty-nine will go to Robinson. If you see on the far right, that yellow section up there, that's Planning Block Sixteen, which we've already agreed will move. So that whole area going up there will be Robinson.
So all of them will be, so they will all be staying together then, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. As long as they're all staying together, because that was their whole thing, they wanted to stay together, correct?
Yeah, that was what we've, we heard in emails and from speakers.
Okay, so we are keeping them together, correct?
Yeah, and the numbers work, so.
Okay.
Okay, so if we go to the next page, the summary of Robinsons. So we have from Robinson, we moved to Concord Middle School, Planning Block Eight again comes up. So that's eighty-four removed. We moved from Robinson to West Cabarrus High School, and that is the Tamar, Freedom Acres, Quahala area. We've accepted those first two already. We moved from West Cabarrus High School. The eighty-three students are added back into Robinson from the Planning Block Sixteen, which you could just see on that previous slide, that yellow upper right area. We accepted that change. And this last area was moving forty-six students from Hickory Ridge to Robinson. So between the adds and the removes, there was a net reduction of nineteen. It still keeps Robinson at eighty-one percent. Okay, we good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Is it eighty-six? Maybe I didn't change that.
Eighty-six percent.
Okay, I didn't change that on the bottom. No, it's net reduction, it was eighty-two on top. Okay, it's still in the eighties. We wanted to keep everybody above eighty.
Yep.
Okay. So, board members, at this time, I will take a motion regarding the high school realignment.
Four consensus?
No, we're going to do this in three motions. So, we've gone through all the high school changes now. Do I have a motion to approve the high school realignment?
So moved.
Second.
So Ms. Grimsley made the motion, Mr. Harrison made the second. All in favor that the board approved the student realignment for high school, as discussed? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so passes six to one. Okay, that's actually pretty good. See, we got through it. Two more to go. Okay, so for middle school. You see the summary capacity chart there? We still have a very high attendance. At Harris Road is the most at risk. You can see very clearly why we need to build a middle school next. When the numbers get this high, that's when the plans start rolling. So this next map is that upper northwest area that we were talking about, adding to both, initially it was adding to the middle school. And then I think, Mrs. Grimsley, you brought up something last week about adding more students to Boger. And then Mr. Schumaker brought it up again this week. And I think it's, it's actually something we need to strongly consider here, to fill up Boger a little more. So I put on that future, I kind of did the strikeout on Odell, and said the future would be Boger, Northwest Cabarrus Middle, Northwest Cabarrus High School, which would keep that area more aligned. And honestly, this whole area north of seventy-three was at one time in that alignment. So we have first, for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, we're saying to move the twenty-eight students. And these areas are all high-growth potential. I don't think they all have water and sewer yet, but there's a lot of vacant land. There was one adjustment on Planning Block Fifty-One. If you look, kind of in the center of the oval, a little bit more to the left side, do you all see Planning Block Fifty-One?
I do, but I want to make a clarification. So we're pulling from Odell?
No.
This is middle school right now.
Yeah, we're pulling from Harris Road first.
It will be, yes.
Okay.
First, we're just going to do the middle school, Harris Road.
Yeah.
Then we're going to do what you're asking, talking about.
All right.
Okay, so on the bottom of Planning Block Fifty-One on the old map, there are two streets in there where there were two children that better fit with Planning Block Fifty right below it. So on the new online maps, that's the second planning block that was adjusted to keep those two streets based on their throughput and where those roads go. So like I said, these are the, the old maps, I captured those, you know, beforehand. But if you look on the online map now, it actually moves down. So those two streets at the bottom of Fifty-One are now in Planning Block Fifty, just for continuity. So the first discussion point here is moving twenty-eight students from Northwest Cabarrus, I'm sorry, from Harris Road Middle School to Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. If you look down to the change to Northwest Cabarrus, adding thirty-six students. Now, did I not update those, Barry, you didn't catch me?
Which one, oh wait, maybe I missed that one.
Twenty-eight plus thirty-six, or?
No, I think I didn't update one number or the other when I was redoing it. How many students do we have in those upper planning blocks?
Hold on, I'm trying to get there.
He's going to get to his calculator. And this is not a simple calculator. This has the planning block numbers and all the recommendations, numbers in it, where we can go and filter on certain things in a certain sequence. And we can see the automatic totals as far as percent of capacity and whatnot. So kudos for developing that.
So you're, you're, I'm sorry, you're on Planning Block Fifty-One, is that what you were asking me?
It's not Fifty-One. No, I'm looking at the total in that new area to move to Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. What is the new total?
Hold on, I have to do something. I didn't have a fifty-one in this one.
I think the new total is actually thirty-six. I just didn't change that top part. Based on my, I'm pretty positive it's thirty-six. Because I did, redid the calculations, it was actually more favorable. So I just didn't change that header number on top. So moving to Northwest, this would be moving thirty-six children to Northwest Cabarrus Middle School and reducing Harris Road, which would come from a hundred and seven down to a hundred and four point five. So I believe we were generally in favor last week of the, of moving these middle school students to help Harris Road. Are we still in agreement?
Anything to help Harris Road.
So the growth, so where's the growth area? Still on Harris Road?
Yeah, Harris Road is still the one that's most in, has kept capacity issues on middle schools. Winkler's not far behind, but-
And then the new middle school's not going to help this area anyways.
Well, there will be a general shift, though, is what we'll find. So for example, you know, as, and I'll say, any time, the circle around a school, as there's growth in the community, the circle around the school keeps closing in on the school. Unfortunately, in the examples like Central Cabarrus High School, all that growth came from the south. So we've had to keep nipping off the top and all around the, the top part of that district in order to reduce the capacity.
So, let me get your numbers straight. On the Northwest Cabarrus, you had eight-thirty-five, and you added twenty-nine to that. And that will give you your new total, which is eight-sixty-four.
Isn't it thirty-six?
No, the thirty-six is the elementary.
Elementary.
That's where you had your-
So it's twenty-nine, you said?
Twenty-nine.
Okay.
And that gives you a percentage at Northwest Cabarrus of ninety-seven point seven-four percent.
Ninety-seven point seven-four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And what does Harris Road become?
Harris Road, hold on.
As opposed to a hundred and seven?
Yeah. So I'm going to guess it's probably a hundred and five, point five or something?
It's a hundred and five point one-five, or a hundred and five, yeah.
So this screams out for the need for a middle school.
So that, for the total at Harris Road, it'll be thirteen oh five.
Okay. Okay, are we still in agreement of moving these children for middle school as well? They're already slated to move for high school. Okay. Okay, so we accept the change for the middle school. Now to look at the same area for elementary school. These children are currently, and you said, Barry, it was thirty-six in elementary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. These students are currently in the Odell schools. In order to allow more growth for Odell, if we move these students to Boger Elementary, which can handle the additional students based on their current capacity, it also keeps a very clean feeder district line.
Okay, so the only issue I have with that is Boger, I felt like at some point in time would have to have some impact with Weddington and Carl Fur. Not going this side of the county, but coming up. Because I'm not sure what we're going to do with Weddington and Carl Fur. Where, we can't push down to Wolf Meadow. We would have to push up to Boger, that's the only school that could do that. Why would we do that?
Yeah, the key thing is at Weddington, they have so much land there. And they were able to get that large mobile unit, was it eight, or ten, or I don't even sure? Was it eight? They were able to get that whole unit, I think it has bathrooms in it and everything. So it's really like an annex to the building.
I guess, you know, when I saw that number of a hundred and twenty-some percent over capacity, that's now. So my worry was, in a couple of years, if that gets worse, where would we put those kids? If we had to redo this again?
Yeah, and I think, you know, as it, if this full legislation gets implemented, and we don't get any more stall years, or it doesn't become null and void, I think we'll have to reevaluate. Because right now, we don't have an elementary for growth on the books.
But that's my concern, so why would we, I mean, why is it necessary to move kids into Boger right now?
I don't think it's necessary, but you're talking about moving them from a different area that's-
I wasn't going that direction. That, my point was, if we were going to ever need to move into Boger who has the room, it would come from below, from Weddington and Carl Fur. They're at Odell now, so I'm not sure why it would be necessary to move them from Odell.
Yeah, I just thought, from, me personally, this lined up nicely. It kept a consistent-
Are we trying to align the feeder zone?
As well.
Middle school, I get, but to me, we're still going travel distance, what is that? If we're going to talk distances.
Um, I don't, I actually took it off to get both of those on the slide.
Because that's a good, that's a good distance from Boger.
It is, but you figure Boger-Northwest-Northwest are all together. So it's no different than moving the middle school or the high school.
And I get it with the high school and the middle school. And I'm, and I, but that's being done for valid reasons. I mean, Harris Road needs its definite relief. But I don't know why we would need to move them from Odell.
Well, part of the comments that we've heard is that there's all this growth in Odell. So the students on the north side of Route Three are already going to Boger. And they're going just as far as these students that would go on the south side because they all border Mooreville Highway. So it made sense that you would, you would main, go ahead and pick those up, move them over and keep them at Boger so you could get, get that out. Now, there's one other option. Back in two thousand and fifteen, we redistricted Planning Block Eighty-four, which I didn't happen to offer that up. But there's some apartments over there. And we redistricted that one from Boger because we knew the apartments coming to Carl A. Fur.
Where's Eighty-four?
Eighty-four is on the Popper Tent Road and Eighty-five, on the south side of Eighty-five, right there. Or whatever direction that is for Eighty-five, because it's going east and west. But it's, it's right there, there's a set of apartments in that area. And then there's the Reclamation Center, if you remember, the Tire Reclamation Center over there on that side of the highway. And so we had redistricted that area because there were no apartments. There wasn't anybody living there two or three years ago when we knew the apartments were coming and said, all right, we'll put them at Carl A. Fur. Now, maybe it makes sense to add them to the mix to Boger along with the other Odell students. And then that will help reduce some of the fur tension that you're, you're feeling.
I guess my thought was, you know, Jane, can you put that map back up that we're looking at right now?
No. Seventeen. That's it.
So when you know that Boger is actually east of everything that we're looking at, that, with that oval, that's a huge chunk of Odell being taken out. And my thought was, when I initially sent that email, if we're ever going to do anything with Weddington and Carl A. Fur, we're going to push up into Boger because we don't have a choice. We cannot, definitely not go down to Wolf Meadow and into those areas. So we would go up. So Boger's going to increase somewhat just by default. My thought would be, if Odell needs to absorb, for the lack of the better words, the pink area up there and make Odell a clean, that was what I was talking about, drawing that line, so that Odell becomes that continual area up there.
Oh, you mean, add the students that are up there in the, that are going to Boger to Odell?
If we ever have to, because my thought is, we're going to have to go up and over, not down. Because we can't go down, right?
Well, but we have, what I'm trying to do is create extra space at Odell, which where the tension is, because in the, in the triangle between Odell and, and Odell Road and, and Popper Tent and seventy-three, and that triangle is where all the, a lot of growth is happening. And that, you know, of course, a lot of ground hasn't even been broken yet. So they're platted, but they're not there yet. They haven't started the infrastructure improvements. So my thought was, go ahead and move some students out of Odell now while we have this opportunity, because it'll be a long time before that area, you know, Kannaples is running water out there, but they really haven't got themselves established at this point with water and sewer up in that area to, to support that area. with water and sewer up in that area, to, to support that area. So, they don't have a lot of plating going on yet. It will. But, you know...
My point about Odell completely, yes. And that's what I get, but I'm saying, we just seem to be making Boger's district a lot larger.
Well, Boger is kinda in that same situation that Bethel's in.
But, right, but I'm saying, if we continue to make Boger's area larger and reducing Odell's, and we ever have to push up with Weddington and Carl Fur, we're gonna have to go up. They're already gonna be so very large, we're gonna have to modify that again.
Yeah, I think that's, like, so much future, though, speculation.
Well, not with Weddington being at a hundred and twenty percent.
Yeah, I just, I personally don't think we change anything for the elementary from where they are. We're moving these areas for the middle school and a high school over to Northwest and Northwest.
But Odell is not that far from Northwest and middle or high school.
Which area, I'm sorry?
Oh, if, I mean, they're at Odell now, correct?
Yes.
Not this upper part here? Not the purple part that's already on there?
The, the recommendation. The recommendation. Right.
Yeah, the, the, the children in the pink area are going to Boger now.
They're already at Boger.
Right.
The only ones that we were moving, who are at Odell, but we would move them to Boger, is the ones that we're, that we discussed here. So, they would be moving to Boger. To help offset some of the population at Odell. That's, it's low-hanging fruit. Plus, you keep them contiguous with their middle school, so they would...
I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. I'm just thinking more futuristically than just this next little round. So, I guess I'm thinking, if we, if we can increase Boger's district now, and we ever, and we will, it's not like it's an option. We will have to do something with Weddington and Carl Fur. Where are we gonna go?
Well, I guess that, that will be, um, in a couple of years. I mean, all the elementaries are getting tight right now. So, there's not a one that we can say, except for Bethel. And unfortunately, we can't shift that too much, uh, because of where it is. I mean, I don't think we start changing that top part. They're already part of, um, and we haven't even added those numbers or...
I wasn't changing it. I was, I was leaving it as it is. Odell to Northwest Cabarrus Middle to Northwest Cabarrus High School.
So, you're saying these planning blocks that we're suggesting for elementary, just leave them at Odell right now? Don't move anybody else to Odell?
Well, if we, the way it is right now, we're shift, I mean, to me, that's a transportation. So, tell me, we're not gonna have to have longer bus routes to move those kids to Boger up at the top end of that county there, and we're gonna bring it, bring it down and absorb the rest of those first several blocks below the pink?
Yeah, no...
Yes, let me, let me talk about that, because if you expand that map and you look, the students over in, um, Planning Block Thirty-nine, there's a subdivision over there, right across from Concierge. Concierge, where, you know,
Where there's five kids.
Keith Wayne's got his place.
Yes.
Those students have to come out to Mooresville Highway, go down and pick up Odell School Road and come in the back way to get to Odell.
Okay.
Right now, they could just go straight down, um, Odell, uh, Mooresville Highway, and they would never have to go back in. So, all these students have to hit Mooresville Highway to do anything. Now, it might be a little bit longer, but it's a straight shot. It's out of the normal, normal traffic flow, and you're not having to go across Seventy-three. And so, there were some advantages of not having to do that. Plus, you know, we're out there in the rural part of the county, it's undeveloped. And we're kinda faced with that fit situation we have in Mount Pleasant and in Bethel. You know, so, it was, I thought, maybe a compromise, especially since we already have kinda agreed that we wanted to move this middle school students over to Northwest. Then this would at least le, leave them in their school and try to minimize that disruption. But, that was where I was thinking, and I think that's where, cause I was trying to take into account what you had said. The other option is to add another eleven students from that planning block that I was just talking about, at the corner of, uh, Popper Tent, which you cannot see on this map. But, you know, now that we're talking about it, that wouldn't be a bad idea. Add additional eleven students, that increases Boger by another eleven, and then makes Popper Tent Road a dividing line for Boger.
I hesitate to add anything like that now, because we've gone through repeated discussions of what we're presenting tonight. This is, this was already in the middle school, uh, that we've now accepted. Um, we're just considering adding it for the elementary school.
The only advantage I see is Northwest Middle and Northwest High being right there beside Boger. That's the only advantage.
Yeah, they're all three together.
Yeah, all three together.
Yeah.
Now, that's the only thing I see as the advantage of them all being together.
And that's, I'll say, a fairly big advantage when, you know, when kids maintain the feeder district. So, okay, so, Ms. Blackwell, I guess we need, it's time to poll. This will be, this area will be Northwest Middle and Northwest High. Do we wanna line up the elementary as well?
You know, it's, it's, uh, I, like, part of me says yes and part of me says no. And I, I just say that because I, I don't think they were planning on changing elementary schools. Like, that wasn't ever in the discussion. Am I right or wrong on that?
Yeah, it, it, it wasn't in a previous discussion.
So, one of the things that I remember talking about when we were doing this was not making up our own scenarios that were not originally in the discussion. I, I just, I mean, I recall us talking about not doing that as much as possible. So, that is my hesitation with changing them to Boger. I understand that for feeder, um, you know, for it to, to feed into Northwest Cabarrus Middle School and High School, I, I completely understand that. But, I just thought that part of the goal was to make as little change as possible if it wasn't originally recommended.
And, and you're right, it is. This was a follow-on from the discussion for the middle school. So, to provide, cause there was concern last week about Odell being overcrowded. So, it was brought up as a, as a possible point.
Could we put Ms. Reimer on the spot, just to get her opinion?
Go for it, Ms. Reimer. You hadn't had a chance to really talk tonight.
I mean, I need to be factual, but I don't have an opinion, how about that?
Okay, we'll take that.
Yeah, go for it.
I really was going more for the transportation issue. You know, just looking like that would make longer bus routes, but, you know, maybe that's a calculation that I'm...
So, I think I'll kinda give you the typical speech that we talk about when we talk about transportation. And that is, it's so complicated, and that the majority of our students ride the same amount of time, whether they live a mile from the school or they live five miles from the school. I may pick you up either on the way in or out. Most of the time, I'm picking you up on the way out. I take you out, pick people up, and come back in a different way. So, uh, transportation will typically say that, that there's a timeframe and a time window. Are some routes shorter than others? Absolutely. But the majority, in this situation, would it make a drastic change? I don't think so.
Yeah, before you go, um, as she mentioned, Weddington, Weddington, what, at what point do we cap that school? I mean, it says one hundred and twenty-six percent.
So, when we start talking about capping, we talk about, can we put any more students on that facility and serve them and educate them? When we can't do that anymore, we talk about capping. For example, Patriots. Right now, Patriots is at just about every busted seam, no more mobile units. We're taking classrooms and resource rooms and tearing the walls down and creating bigger spaces. We're taking different areas just to create a classroom space. When we have no options, that's when we talk about capping. At Weddington, we still have options. The eight-plex that we put there this year is, uh, very, very nice. They, they like it. Uh, we're looking at doing that again for next year, and we'll have plenty of space, uh, at that point. You know, I think that, to Ms. Grimsley's point, at some point, there has to be another elementary school on the books. But, for right now, with the K-three class size and what it's done to us, uh, uh, we don't see that happening. But, uh, we're, we're still comfortable, and we can still put kids on that site. So, capping Weddington would not be in our conversation at this point.
We would not probably transfer students in there at parent request, but doesn't have to be stopped completely from new students, so... Okay, decision time. Ms. Blackwell, can't have an either-or. Boger or Odell?
Why you start on this side?
Ah, just cause I look left.
I'm gonna say Odell.
Mr. Harrison? Mr. Sheemaker?
Oh, Boger.
Okay, uh, Mr. Walter?
Need to keep kids together, so Boger.
Ms. Carpenter?
Even though I do like Boger, I'm gonna say Odell, because I hate to change it mainstream.
Okay, Ms. Black, uh, Ms. Grimsley?
I'm gonna say Odell, for the reasons I said.
Okay, so you're gonna leave it up to me, and I'm gonna say Boger. As I studied that option, I, I just, I like, we have so many disparate feeder patterns, and I like keeping them together. Okay, so, we will accept the change for elementary school also. Okay. The next page is just a summary of the, uh, committee's recommendation for the elementary school realignment. Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Um, remember that percentage when we get transfer appeals to Mount Pleasant Elementary. We can't approve those anymore. So, just remember your thoughts tonight when those come up. Um, so, we have Carl A Fur, as was mentioned, is high. Um, Mount Pleasant Elementary, I'm just looking at the over hundreds. Pitt School Road, that was a program, and I think, uh, Ms. Reimer did a nice explanation to us with regard to design capacity versus program capacity. Um, and that's affects Pitt School Elementary. Same thing with Royal Oaks, was a program, uh, decision there. And then, uh, Weddington Hills Elementary, um, which was just explained. And Wolf Meadow Elementary is still high, but their numbers are so much lower that it's not, the percentage doesn't mean as many students. Okay. So, the other change to the elementary school recommendation is on Slide Nineteen. And that is that same area that is north of Forty-nine, right against the county line on the west side. And this is keeping this, this recommendation. Um, they're currently at Pitt School Road Elementary. The committee's recommendation moved them to Harrisburg Elementary. And we're saying, let's keep them at Pitt School Road, no change. And I believe we were in agreement after hearing the explanation of programs that were taking the space at Pitt School Road, and those programs would be moved. Or at least some of them would be moved. So, are we still in agreement to keep these children at Pitt School Road Elementary?
Yes, because there's, we have to, to go across Forty-nine to get to the middle school. But the high sc, I'm sorry, the elementary school should be kept safer by going to Pitts. The, the travel pattern would be safer for the children.
But elementary school, kids don't drive. The elementary school, kids don't drive.
Are you sure?
And the middle school goes to the same place. I'm, I'm somewhat concerned that we're seventy-six percent at Harrisburg Elementary School, if we drop that. That's a, it's pretty low.
Yeah, that's, I, I believe the Harrisburg District is what we discussed before, still has a high growth rate potential. So, you know, we're talking about Patriots is going, and Harrisburg Elementary are sending a large amount of students to the new Hickory Ridge Elementary School. And then they will be filled again in no time.
Can I hold you that?
I'll just say, go take a drive around. That's what I did when I had occasion to be in different parts of the county over the past few months. I just took another fifteen minutes and went the long way home. And I was like, holy cow. When we think things are slowing down, okay, are we in agreement to keep these children at Pitt School Road Elementary where they are today? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we will keep them at Pitt School Road Elementary. Okay, um, before we get to, I failed to do the, um, vote on middle school. Can we do the vote on the middle school? Do we accept the changes for the middle school that we discussed tonight? Do I have a motion? Whoa. David, what did you do? I just saw a piece of a microphone flying.
I'll second Ms. Grimsley's motion to, uh, accept the middle school.
Okay, Ms. Grimsley made the motion, Mr. Sheemaker made the second. Mr. Walter?
Can we get justification again, why Planning Block Four One Four is going from Concord to Mount Pleasant? Why is that? The percentages don't make sense.
Yeah, I think that was the committee recommendation based on alignment along the highway.
But if the goal was not to move students, why are we doing it? We're going from a school that's eighty, eighty, whatever, eighty-four percent to someone, to a school that's ninety-seven percent capacity?
Uh, I didn't hear the committee's recommendation on that specifically, other than it was there, and we just haven't really discussed it since the first meeting, so... Anybody else wanna discuss it? Okay, let's vote on the middle school realignment. We have a motion and a second.
Do any of these require a public hearing, cause we've changed something?
No, in fact, nothing requires a public hearing after the first one, per our attorneys. We had the second public hearing as a courtesy, because we wanted to hear.
Right, but we're changing something. Wouldn't we want to input from the public on that change?
So, the upper Northwest. So, the high school's already been changed. We have not heard from anybody, except for one positive feedback. We had no negative feedback from that area, the upper Northwest area. Um, we had one positive feedback that said, looking forward to my child being in STEM program. So, I would think that they might want their child to be in the middle school STEM program, too.
I guess we wouldn't know that unless we had a public hearing.
Yeah. Well, I guess what I'd like to do is approve it tonight. If we hear negative feedback about moving the middle school, then we can adjust, because we're still a year out. So, but I think we need to make our commitments tonight. You all okay with that? We have a motion and a second. All in favor to accept the middle school alignment recommendations as we discussed tonight? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So, that is accepted six-one. Okay, we'll go on to Slide Twenty now. The long-awaited moment, folks. Thanks for sticking it out.
I make a motion.
I will make a motion.
Uh, but I...
Okay, no motion yet, discussion first.
Come on, let me make a ma, I do wanna give some information, though.
Okay.
Let me give you some information. Um, I, I would like to do that, because I know the, at the last meeting, we were talking about, uh, that there were mobile units, that no, there was twelve mobile units, and that no more mobile units could be put on that site. Well, I did gather some additional information today, and I thought it would be nice to share that with our board. Um, out of those mobile units, three of those mobile units right now are being used for storage, uh, of equipment. Uh, two of those units are being used all day for students, just, you know, with students all day. And the rest of those twelve units are not being used for students. I mean, they're being used for, uh, AIG glasses and just not all the time. In other words, they don't...
Resource rooms.
Well, yeah, for AIG and stuff, but do not have students in them all day long. Now, next year, they will have two of those additional classes. They will have students in them all day. So, they will have four of those mobile units that will have students in them all day long. But now, don't...
Can you back up, please, and give me the numbers again?
Okay.
Three mobiles occupied?
Well, three have got, uh, storage stuff. In other words, the, uh, you know, desk and stuff like that in them.
Okay.
All right? Right now, two of the mobile units have got students in them all day long. In other words, they've got a second grade class and a fifth grade class.
Okay.
All day long. And then the rest of them... And then the rest of them, the remainder, have just got classes like AIG and, I, I mean, they're, they're being used.
So, hi, and how many's there?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay, so, three being used for storage, most likely because they've used every space inside the building.
They've, they're using them, got their desk and stuff which they would, you know, they would use them, you know, as their equipment, you know, like desk and stuff that they need, it's their, there's stuff like that, but what I'm saying, but there's three that's that way. And they're all set up and everything, but I, and don't get me wrong, those, that, there's growth in that area. They've had growth and they're gonna continue, I think they're just like Odell, they have got growth. But what I'm saying is, I think some of, uh, some of us were led to believe that they had twelve units out there that were full with children all the time.
No, Ms. Carpenter, I want to clarify something there. Um, principals are very creative and I think Ms. Reimer will, you can look at her and she's gonna nod, because I've heard this, this speech before, I'm just relaying it.
I'll try to explain.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
So let me try to, uh, leery to try to explain this because it gets confusing, but I, I hope that you understand. So, so let me try to explain it at elementary school because it gets a little bit confusing, right? So, when you're at an elementary school and students are in their teacher's classroom, okay? When they go out for a special, they are leaving that classroom and going, so, when I say a special, let me say that. So they're going to art, music, P, right? So let's just say art, that's an easy one to do. They leave their classroom and they go to an art room, okay? So, there's a room that takes up art and there's their classroom that teachers are in. So everybody with me, because it does get confusing? So, but it takes two classrooms to serve the same amount of kids. Those twenty-five kids are in the classroom and we need an art room, okay? So all the other classrooms are sending people there too. So, during the day, people are rotating in, but it's, takes two classrooms and it, it doesn't serve any more kids because they're rotating in and out. Everybody with me? So, when you built, put a mobile unit outside, now they can rotate out to art in the mobile unit, which actually frees up that classroom that they were gonna have to rotate down for art. Does that make sense? So you actually get capacity with that, we get another classroom because I can rotate out for art. But when I have to put a classroom in there, then I don't have that option of rotating out. So when Ms. Carpenter says she's misled, she absolutely was not misled. What that means is, we have these options of rotating kids out in the mobile units to free up classes inside, which actually give us more capacity, right? So, they're rotating in over there so we can use the classroom for something different. And that does get a little bit confusing, so when we have to rotate for art and we rotate for music and we have to rotate for another one, then we're using those all the time. So the more students we get, the more we need to rotate them in. But when we say, now we are putting a third grade classroom out there and a fourth grade classroom, now we don't have anywhere to send them for art, so we need another classroom. Does that make sense? And so, it gets very confusing, but when you only have, whatever they have out there now, twelve, that's the max, you can't do anymore.
Well, I, yeah.
When, when you don't have it and you have to rotate somewhere else, and Ms. Reimer looks like she can explain it better than me,
Yeah, explain it.
Then you're done, you have to cap the school because there is nowhere else to put students.
So, you asked me earlier about Weddington and you said, why, Mr. Walters asked me. So, at Cox Mill, you can't put anymore. So, any space they have, if you use it for classroom space, which is what they told you they're gonna have to do, then that's when we say, we don't have a new elementary school on board up there anytime soon, right? So when you use that for classroom space and not special space, not art, not resource, as, as Cindy, Ms. Fertmaw said, not any of those classes, which we have to have, then that's when you cap the school. So the question to Mr. Walters is, I can continue to add mobile units at Weddington right now, even though we're at a hundred and twenty percent, I can't add anymore. So when we use those, that is the utmost kids you're gonna be able to serve there. And in two years from now, if you've done that, which is what your principal told you today, you're in trouble. So, that's, that's from, again, that's not my opinion, that's a fact. And that's why we say, you know, yes, there's mobile units out there, yes, we can use some of those, you don't really gain capacity by putting art out there. You get, you, I mean, well, actually, you do gain capacity by putting art there because you get a classroom inside, but they've already done all that. So now they're also gonna, not only gonna be doing that, they're gonna be putting regular classrooms out there. So then you're done, there is no more space.
So, can I ask a question too about using these mobile units for storage? Um, it seems to me that, and I can't remember what the exact price of these mobile units are, but I kinda remember them being really expensive. So, to me, it seems kind of a waste of resources to be using them as storage units.
So let me speak to that. So, because of our growth across the district and because we've had to redistrict multiple times, it's very expensive to move them. So for example, if we redistrict and move everybody out of Cox Mill, and we've got twelve mobile units there, it would cost us a ton of money to move those. So you don't move them most of the time because we don't have money to move them unless they're needed somewhere else. And if they're needed somewhere else, then we would move them as long as we know that we're not gonna have high growth in that area. Well, we knew Cox Mill was gonna have high growth, so once we redistricted them, we allowed them to stay. Just like you would in your own home, if you have twenty rooms in your house, you move into all twenty of them. I throw my clothes in three different rooms. If I only had one room, I would keep it in one room, but that's exactly what Cox Mill has done. And so, you know, there are times where we've had to move them because we need them, but if we don't have to move them, then we live here.
Well, I'm not necessarily saying moving mobile units, move the junk out of them and put kids in there.
So, that, part of that is probably true because I don't know exactly what's in them, but you also have to understand when I have a ton of kids, I have a ton of desks. And when I don't need those desks anymore, and I may use a room for resource, I don't need thirty desks in there anymore, I only need eight. So what am I gonna do with them? Throw them out and then rebuy them?
Take them to another school that might need them.
By, by the way, we do that a lot, uh, since Mr. Taylor's been here, he has inventory, he inventories everything we do, he shifts stuff around for us constantly. So he does a really good job of that, but a school, district our size with the amount of equipment we have is not as easily moved as, as just, okay, I don't need this, this year, but what if I need it next year? And I'm gonna grow. For example, Cox Mill will probably use those desks next year, so we don't want to send them to another school when
Well, I get that, but, and, and absolutely, with a, with a county that's growing as fast and as rapidly as, as we are, it's not gonna be easy. Nothing we do is gonna be easy. But in my opinion, I would much rather see those trailers used for students so that we could, I don't know, keep Skybrook at Cox Mill, than use those trailers for storage for desks that we could take somewhere else and then maybe have to, if we had to transition them to another elementary school next year, then that, that is what it is. But I mean, these resources, they are ours, so we can use them anywhere in the county.
So, I must have misunderstood, real quick, we don't plan on leaving the mobile units with storage if we need it for students, so that's not the case. So as soon as we need to put students in there, just as Ms. Carpenter said, the principal will be doing that and we will move that equipment. But when they're not needed, if they're not needed and they're chose not to use, I'll also say that Cox Mill area is very, um, not happy with putting their students in mobile units. We've dealt with that multiple times. So, that was another reason why the principal has made multiple, uh, attempts at doing different things inside the building, so therefore we're out of, out of space there. But we would never not use a mobile unit and keep it for storage if we needed it.
And I have to say that, and that's one thing the teacher said, she was just used them because those were desks that she used in her school. Because I want to make sure that that was stated. And she did state that next year she would be getting two teachers and that she was going to need those classrooms for her two teachers that she was getting. And that two of those classrooms would be used next year for her two new teachers. So four of those classroom, four of those mobile units were going to be used for, for
Regular classrooms.
For regular classrooms, so four of those were going to be used. But when you said that, were you making a motion? I'll second that motion.
Yeah, he's gonna hold on, yeah. I just wanted to make a note in the principal's monthly report, uh, that gets reported to the state, um, between seventeen eighteen and the current school year, there was a growth of forty-six students, uh, at Cox Mill Elementary School. And we think there's six grades in that building between K through five. Unfortunately, people have not figured out how to grow kids exactly in the same grade. So, those forty-six children could have meant, I don't know what it was this year, if anybody recalls, um, it could have meant additional three teachers, not two.
Again, that's the K-three class also, as a general rule, that means it's gonna take three more. And so, again, when you say this year, there, we know now they're getting two more teachers next year, they need two more mobile units. If the following year she has the same thing, then she's now beyond her mobile units, she cannot rotate people in and the school is capped because you cannot put anything else there. So, if you have the same growth one more year, you're done. Um, and so, you know, when Ms. Black was, again, I can see kind of common sense, you say, oh, why aren't students there? Every year, we have to sit down with our group, with the county, because it costs almost as much to move one as it does to buy one. And so, you have to sit with the county to say, well, what, what's the capacity for that, what are we willing to do? We're gonna move to, or if we think we're gonna use it in the next year, it's not worth moving it this year to one school and turn around and moving it back the next year. So, it's always a judgment call of trying to, to use growth and the cost for moving it.
Well, again, I'm not talking about moving the mobile unit itself, I'm talking about moving the stuff out of it.
Right, but right now, as Ms. Reimer said, we don't, we don't need the mobile unit for students, but we do need two of, in, in four months or whenever we start
Right, that's what I, yeah. So what are we saying that we don't need it for students for when we know we are gonna need it for students?
Because we don't need it today, but we will need, we need it in August, right?
Right.
That's why it's there and be willing.
And I'm totally fine with keeping the mobile unit there.
Right.
What I'm saying is move the junk out of it because I know that we're gonna need those for students. And right now, if we're needing, I mean, if we're already talking about, we're at capacity at that school and overcapacity, use that, use that as a classroom.
Yeah, that overcapacity, I think, is in the mobile units. So you figure the capacity is in the school building and the overcapacity is in the mobile units for the other classes.
Right, so, I mean, at this point, honestly, it seems to me, if, if we did use those mobile units as classrooms, then Cox Mill would be able to, to handle the kids that are there.
Okay, I want to, if we can go to the map because it's important that you see this. The population in the three planning blocks that we referred to as Skybrook, um, increased more than I think anybody expected this year. The adjacent planning blocks that people have not wanted us to move because, um, it's just along the way to Cox Mill Road, even though two of them border Cox Mill Road, they have decreased. So, when we look at the numbers now, the planning blocks that we referred to as Skybrook are now at one hundred and thirty-six. There was actually a growth of thirty-six students from one year to the next, I think it's important to see that. The other planning blocks actually dropped to seventeen students. So, it's now a hundred and fifty-three total minus an estimate of twenty for Mandarin, which leaves us a hundred and thirty-three students. Even if we take out the seventeen, we're still at a hundred and sixteen. So, that's more than the eighty we expected previously, now that all the new numbers are applied. I'm sorry, we don't take questions from the audience during these, our board discussions. So, I'm sorry, we, we can't because we tried that one time years ago and all of a sudden the hands were flying up and we had complete disorder. Excuse me, sir, you're out of order, board members. So, questions or comments? I just think it's important to see that.
Can we make a motion? Can I make a motion?
Sure.
Are we done with discussion? Okay.
No, we'll, we'll discuss after there's a motion second again.
So, I, I want to make a motion that we keep Skybrook at Cox Mill Elementary.
I'll second it.
So does that mean moving Planning Block seventy-six and four sixty-four and eighty-three?
Which ones did you say, Laura?
The ones on Popular Ten Road.
So, board members, you're willing to what's the pleasure for the, um, yeah, the planning blocks seventy-six, four sixty-four, and eighty-three? Because I put an arrow in there just so you can see where Cox Mill Road is. Two of those planning blocks are on Cox Mill Road. So you're moving kids that are about a mile from the school? And saying you can't go to the school around the corner?
Haven't we done that before already?
Well, central, yeah, Central Cabarrus is a whole different bird, um, because of how that growth has happened, but, um, this is intentionally realigning.
State which, go ahead and state which ones you want to do, Laura, I mean whichever ones you wanted, uh, to do. You could go ahead and add those in if you want, now, I mean, I'll second whichever one you want. Though, that other one has two, ten, and I'm not sure, you're showing three, but three is already included in that. They're green, so those three are already added into Cox Mill. See down there?
So in the right circle?
They're already
I'm not saying ten, I'm saying Cox Mill Road comes down to that intersection between four sixty-four and eighty-three.
But people-wise, it's showing ten and two, that's only twelve.
It's actually seventeen kids, students.
Yeah, now that collective area is seventeen, from seventy-six, four sixty-four, and eighty-three, it's now a collective seventeen.
Seventy-six and eighty-three is
Seventeen, not, when I add ten and two, that's twelve.
Yeah, you need to, these, remember the map is, is the seventeen eighteen numbers, the text on the right is the eighteen nineteen numbers. So it's now seventeen, those, those extra planning blocks.
Do you want to add those seventeen to the other ones?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I agree with that.
Okay, so.
So we're not adjusting Cox Mill at all, is that what?
Yeah, Cox Mill Elementary is at ninety-six point six three with the recommended option. This puts, what's it at today? Do you have the number handy? Huh?
I think so, we're on ten thirty-nine. And, Ms. Reimer, I always want to confirm that because I thought I saw ten oh nine. So what is it again?
Actually, let me look at the PMR report.
So tell me again, where did the eight 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 come in at?
Committee recommendation, I believe. So eight 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 was the committee and then that would be adding in one thirty-three back. So we're at ten thirty-nine. They already have kindergarten registration going on, so they know what their numbers are starting to go up to. I think we have, we survived one year, uh, with growth, with no changes. And I don't know if anybody in the audience, if you, and I'm asking for a response here, but if you're familiar with the term capping means, we've had to do it a number of times over the years. Uh, Ms. Reimer explained part of it, that there is just no more room on the property, insider in the main building or the mobile units. And we stop all new attendance, meaning even if somebody buys your house, they cannot go to Cox Mill Elementary. That's what it means. And it has been very painful, we've had to do it over the years, uh, both because of resistance to redistricting and because we didn't have the funding, we can only build so many schools in a period of time. The county has to go for funding, they like to keep their high bond rating, um, which is important to the funding expense. So we have no choice. We've had to cap Northwest Cabarrus Middle School in the past. I think we had, do you remember, did we have to cap the high school too?
Yes, Northwest High.
Cabarrus High School?
Central.
Yes, I mean, we've had to cap a number of, um, schools in the past and it's not fun. And it's very, it's very difficult on the families because when Northwest Cabarrus capped, they had to go to Concord Middle School, it's the only school we had enough capacity on. And so, if y'all know where Northwest Cabarrus Middle School is and where Concord Middle School is, that was quite a drive, but we had no choice.
But also, I think valid points have been made. When you have to go to two or three schools too, that's a traumatic experience also. Now, you've made yours, but I think that's a valid, very valid point. And I think too, the other thing, the points that have been made about criteria that has been, ew.
We just spilled some coffee up here, sorry.
Uh, that has been made, I think, uh, criteria that had been set out by a committee and that has been met, I think that that has been met, I think that that ew was a very valid. I'm sorry, we had a spill. That it has been met, and I think that, that certain people should not be penalized if they had met their point. I still need some tissue. But two, I think when children have to be moved once or twice, and I know that Odell was supposed to be made, you know, that was supposed to be convenient, tried to make it convenient for having the schools together.
He's pretty fantastic.
Thank you. But I know that I've heard complaints because parents did not like it, especially when they started getting two children and having them at both schools. They found that to be inconvenient.
You mean on the Odell, the Odell?
Mm-hmm.
Well, madam, Mrs. Carpenter, you made the vote on that, I didn't.
I know.
And I've heard it both ways. So, don't go down that path because there's anecdotes in both directions.
In both ways, but that is, but after it was built, then we found that to be, you know, trial and error. You haven't seen us build five or six schools like that either, have you? Okay?
So, I'm hearing from our audience members that they don't want to change schools two and three times, but by this discussion, I hear that if we have to cap something, people will have to change their schools three and four times.
Yeah, I mean, as long as they own their same house, they're okay, but as soon as that house sells, the new residents don't get to go to school there.
That's right.
I mean, capping is ugly, no matter, no matter how we sugarcoat it. And it reverberates through more than just the immediate community.
It does.
But then two, we don't, we, none of us have a crystal ball setting here.
No, we don't.
And then, we knew that, and if we go by what the Crier Report said, the Crier Report said it was gonna go downhill.
In five years, I think it was.
Ah, well, and if that's the case, then none of us sitting at this table's gonna have to worry about it.
Okay, so we have a?
All right? And so, then let's, we got a vote on the table. I call the question.
Well, I still have something to say because I never got a chance to say anything.
Well, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I'm glad you recognized me. Ms. Perton-Ball, do I have the floor now?
Yes, you do, sir.
Thank you. All right, so, if we do the motion, the percentage at Cox Mill will go to 113% with 1,041 students. In the new environment, and we know that, does the K3 effect still stay on for two years, so we'll still be losing students per classroom from K through 3, and so, the stress will be more on the school than ever over the next two years, starting in, you know, because it doesn't finish until 2021, right? 2021's the last time that they reduce the size of the classrooms. So, if you go to the Odell side, you now, with the decisions that we've made tonight, we will have reduced Odell to 87.5%. And it's gone from 1668 to 1479. Pretty good use of space, maybe not. But, you know, the thing is, is here we are, setting Odell up. Now, will it grow 13% in two years, three years, five years? I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball either, but I can tell you Cox Mill will grow more, and it'll already be at 113%. And we're gonna lose classrooms at Cox Mill in the next two years because of the law that's sitting before us right now that the General Assembly so wonderfully passed to reduce class size. And it is putting a lot of stress. That's part of the reason we're having these conversations. That's why our numbers are looking so bad because these classrooms are coming up all the time now. Because we have to reduce the class size from K, four out of six grades have a reduced class size. And that's 2/3 of our student population is going to reduce class sizes. That means that we're gonna have to increase the class sizes in fifth and, fourth and fifth grades to extraordinary levels to accommodate this situation. So, and when we're talking probably 35 to 40 students per classroom in fourth and fifth grades if we overcrowd this school. So, I just, I say that you gotta be logical about this. I understand about children having to be moved and moved and moved. I hated it when we had to move the students from Cox Mill to Odell, but we had to do it because Cox Mill was overloaded back in 2014 when we made that move. We didn't have a choice. We made that move, and it worked out. Because I've talked to parents that had just enjoyed their tenure, their children have done well, and even though their child had to change schools at kindergarten and then go to first grade at the O Bell Primary, then go to Odell Elementary, they're having unbelievable experiences, and they said their child has done really well. So, you've got anecdotes in both ways. The good thing about this particular part of our county is we have parent support. We don't have it in a lot of other areas of our county, but we have it here, where parents will make sure their children get the very best. I don't look at the same problems as if we were doing this to the interior of Concord where the parents don't have the same opportunities. And so, I think we have to be very logical about this. You overcrowd a school, and then in 2022, you're still gonna have more classrooms lost because we're gonna increase that population. And we still got growth going on out there, so it's not gonna just stop immediately.
And I really have to think that there has to be a significant cost between a school that is 96.63% capacity and the same school per your motion and per your second, which is 113% capacity. The burden on the rest of the county seems to me that it's not especially being taken into consideration.
One of the other things, I know that at one time, the teacher did mention that Cox Mill has been up to as many as 1,300 and something students before. Well, no, she told me. She said 1,300, she told me.
1,100, and that was before K3 class size. I'm not sure what the teacher said, but that's what we.
It was the principal.
1,100, and that was before K3 class size.
Ah, okay. She told me more than that, but I'm not gonna argue.
Okay, well, before we take the final vote, I just want to say to the parents, as Mr. Schumaker said, thank you for your engagement at whichever school your children go to. Even though we struggled through redistricting, the best response we get at the end, whether we voted your way or not, is that if your child moves, they had a great experience, just like my neighbors who probably could have hung me out to dry when Boger opened all those years ago, but when they came back and said, we're so glad we moved. So, there are positive things both ways. But the reality is, when we take this vote, I'll be voting against the motion on the floor because I'm not willing to take a risk in my fiduciary responsibility to the entire county of needing to cap schools. So, if the other board members are willing to take that risk, you know, so be it, but I'll remind you.
Would you modify your motion to take out the 76, 464, and 83? That's 17.
I will modify my motion for that, yes.
And that's fine with me, just keeping in the, keeping in the 70, 71, 76, I think's what it is.
And that's 69.
69.
69.
Okay, so, you're willing to tell the kids at the end of Cox Mill Road, you can't go to the school around the corner?
That only changed it by 2%, so you're still at 111.5%. You haven't done a blasted thing by making that little bit of a change to the motion.
Well, I'm not.
If you're gonna keep the motion, keep it there as it is. I mean, you're not making any change.
Well, it gets me, I don't know why you're so concerned about that. I don't want to, and don't get me wrong, I respect every member on here. I don't want to be coming off as the witch with the broom, but you're real concerned here when you have got eight, eight of the eight elementary schools over 100%. And you're sitting here lecturing me when you have got eight of them, eight over 100%. And you're sitting here shaking your finger, not really physically. Eight, eight, no, I'm just, but eight, eight schools on this list over 100%. And you're lecturing me on being worried about it.
Mrs. Carpenter, I'm gonna call point of order here because we're all aware of each school is not the same. They have different programs in them, they have different ability for mobile units. Each school is different in whether they can handle them or not, so I think that's inappropriate.
But, yeah, but there is, and I'm sure that's the case. But Odell and Cox Mill both, they are high-growth areas. I understand that 100%, and I think both of these schools are, but I feel confident. I know, I know what Odell's going to do, and I feel confident in my vote, and I feel confident in what I'm doing. And so, that's why I can do this with complete confidence.
Okay, so, let's see, what is the motion as revised? Are we leaving it as is?
No.
Letting the kids stay?
The motion, the motion is what Laura, what Ms. Blackwell said was that she was going to include planning blocks 69, 71, 70, 76, 464, and 83. Yeah, all those planning blocks.
I'll stay at Cox Mill Elementary.
I'll stay at Cox Mill.
But then, we changed that motion, so we gave some.
It was not seconded, that's right.
There's never been an amendment to it or anything.
It was not amended and seconded.
I did, and you said that you would second it.
Yeah, but you want to keep all those?
Well, at this point, if, I mean, if it's only changing it by what you said, Barry, 2%?
But that might be the difference of capping it or not, so.
For one year.
That might be the, what causes us to cap it or not? Is that what you said?
It could be the 2%.
The 2% could cap. Did you show her the map?
Okay, it's not a map ever. I mean.
It's just my point, if you actually look at the GIS data points and not the planning blocks, you can see where the kids are, and clearly, Skybrook is part of the Cox Mill community.
Okay, so, we have a, so, we're keeping everybody together or we're removing those three? Let's get that solid here. Are we using your original motion or are you amending it?
I think we need to do my original motion.
Okay, we have, all six planning blocks go back to Cox Mill Elementary School. Okay, we have a second by Mrs. Carpenter. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and those against? Okay. So, let me write that down. So, the motion to move Skybrook back to Cox Mill Elementary passes 4-3. So, even with the risk, but that's the board's pleasure, so I like using data, but, okay, so we are done with this agenda item?
We did not vote on the elementary school.
What's that?
We didn't vote on the elementary school as a whole.
On the elementary school, that's right.
Again, do we need a public hearing for some changes?
I don't believe so. So, this elementary school, and we don't, we're not required to have a public hearing. Legal counsel advised that previously.
It has to be required, but we've been doing it before. It would be, makes sense to do so as a courtesy.
So, I missed that, why are we needing to have another public hearing?
We adjusted middle school, was it middle, elementary school boundary? That's not part of the plan that we published.
Okay, and I think the conclusion was that if there are additional folks who come back and say, even though they've not voiced anything about the middle school or high school, then we will take their information into account, so.
Is that what the board wants to do?
Okay, so, the elementary alignment, so Skybrook was voted on separately. So, excluding Skybrook, do we have a motion to approve the elementary adjustments?
Well, the only one left is Beverly Hills, is that not correct?
Well, Beverly Hills is not being, if you will, voted on this time. In the original motion, last June 28th, I believe it was, when we approved the closure and approved the site study, in that motion at the beginning of it, it said that we would move them while there were, was available space. So, this is still, that original motion is still in play. So, until we finish the site review, and then we go to the capital plan.
Is this the original motion to close the school in 20, or have them all moved out in 2020?
It was a whole page typed up that included the motion.
So, what if we don't want to do that motion anymore because we don't know what?
That's not on the table any, right now. We have not worked through that whole motion until we get the Morrisburg report.
And two, another board has taken place, and one board cannot obligate another board.
Well, the majority, yeah, except that's not on the table, we are not prepared for that, it's not been reviewed again. So, let's follow through the first motion, because if we cancel that motion, then we're canceling the site study too. So, let's follow that one through, get the results, start working on the capital plan based on what those results say.
Well, I just want to make sure approving this is not approving that I'm saying, yes, go ahead and do that, and then it come back and say, well, you approved for them to go there and leaving these children in limbo. And I want to go on the record saying this.
So, this holds space at Royal Oaks if, and when they have to move the students?
What was that, Rob, I'm sorry?
Are we holding space at Royal Oaks if we have to move?
Yes, per our motion last June.
Is that what this is?
That's it. Our motion last June still holds. So, until we've completed the elements of that motion, and we take it, if Morrisburg says yes, we can do it, and here's what it looks like, and the board agrees, then we go to the capital plan.
And we enter it into the capital plan? And we put it into the capital plan and petition the commissioners to get this school built?
Okay. What if we, because this could change, and that's why I've always said we've been putting the horse, I mean, because we could utilize this space otherwise, relieve some of the overpopulation we have in some of these other schools if we needed to move them or if we needed to do something, and we're not. And here, we're saying, we've got schools that are overpopulated, we could keep it going and not shut it down and keep utilizing that space.
The challenge, though, is if we don't, once we get past the feasibility study, site review, then we go to the capital plan discussion, we see what that timing looks like. We don't have a swing school if we fill up Royal Oaks right now. You've just removed that from the equation, and then what do we do?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we, but what I'm saying, do you want to keep it as a swing school or you don't want to keep it as a swing school?
Well, right now, we said in the motion last June that we would hold that space, and that's what we're doing. Because there's no better space.
Actually, it's being used as a swing school. We've got to have the feasibility study. Then we put the feasibility on the capital plan. It's still a swing school. Once the approval is made and the commissioners agree that they'll put this on the docket, then these kids will come back whenever that school gets built. But, right now, your own facilities people are telling you, we asked for another year, and they're concerned that they may have to prematurely move out of that school because they're gonna have a major failure, electrical or some type of other system, and they literally can't house the kids there. And then we gotta jump through hoops to make sure that we have a place to educate them when it happens. We don't, you know, we stretched it out another year to make that happen, but I don't think any of us wants to have a school go kaput on them and then have to figure out what we're gonna do to scramble to keep the kids in school. Because if we don't have the space available for them, then what do we do? And we have it right now, and we, and that was part of, what you talked about last week was, Royal Oaks was built as a swing space to give it to you. But, we didn't know what that meant when we talked about it. How are we gonna swing? We had no plan for the inner-city schools, and that was obvious even then. You knew that. I mean, Dr. Phillips rocked that up in the beginning of our discussion. He wanted to see a comprehensive plan of how we're gonna deal with our inner-city schools in Concord, and that's what we came up with in 2016. We actually had that plan, finally. But, you know, it took us several years to get there. We didn't get there in 2014 when we approved the building of Royal Oaks. We weren't there that.
Thank you.
Isn't the concern, the concern, I think, is how long are you gonna keep it as a swing school? You're gonna keep those kids there, five years, 10 years? What is it?
Well, Rob, we got, you know, we got the commissioners right now pushing things out on us, so, you know, that's what we have to talk about them. They hold, it's just like all of our other, the budget issues that were brought up tonight. They hold cards to that. Do they want tax increases? That's a big issue. Deferred maintenance, I mean, when. Deferred maintenance, I mean, when, when, when Ms. Grimsley and Ms. Furtinbaugh and, and Ms. Carpenter were on this board in 2012, they went before the commissioners with the $186 million deferred maintenance issue. Now it's $250 million plus over five, just for five years, not counting the 10 years. So it keeps growing on us. It hadn't gotten any better, and the commissioners haven't, haven't addressed that issue. And that's part of our, part of the problem, why we don't get financing. They've got to figure out what they're gonna do about it. And this board can support them whatever direction they go. If they want to increase taxes to help get these schools fixed, get things fixed, get a new school built, that's what they have to do, to move it up in the timeline. But they're the ones that make the final decision on the capital, you know, how they appropriate capital. We know that. And, you know, we saw that they pushed our middle school out to 2024, and now it's possibly gonna move, it's moving around, but we don't know yet. They haven't made a final decision, but, you know, we, we just wait for them.
So the good thing is we have the convergence of topics coming up. So we have the approval of the regular budget that we approved tonight by the commissioners. So they will approve theirs, and that will blend together. Then we will have what the commissioners in their budget, when they determine they're going to obtain financing for the courthouse and possibly for the two land, pieces of land we're looking at, and when the middle school, as Mr. Schumaker said, when the middle school can be built. Then that starts falling into our capital plan. That may be the next, at least three years, as far as the land purchases and the middle school, possibly up to five years. That may be that expense, or that expenditures. Then by the time we get to the capital plan, maybe sometime this summer, depending on what we hear from Morrisburg in May, by the time we get to the end of summer, maybe it'll be time that we can make a good decision. We'll know what the county's doing with, regarding our stuff. We'll know what they're saying their future expense. They may say, we can get this middle school for you, but after that, we need a three-year gap to pay off the courthouse. I don't know what they're gonna say. I'm not in those meetings, so. But there's a lot of things that are going to happen in the next three months, pieces of information that will come out that we'll be able to have a better view of our capital plan. And then we, like, we like more students coming, we like the county growing, but we have to cross our fingers it's not 1,000 kids this year. So that's the scary part. We have those ups and downs, so, and you really, really never know until the end. So this elementary vote would only be to move the 36 children from W. R. Odell Schools to Charles E. Boger Elementary School, which would align those feeder patterns. So do I have a motion to do that? What's that? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. And, and keep the other children. I didn't have that on the same slide. Yes. The Pitt School Road kids who will stay at Pitt School Road on 49. So those are the only two, Rob, on the elementary. I didn't go backwards far enough here.
Yeah, planning block 132, 33, 134.
Okay, so the two recommendations are Odell to Boger and the Highway 49 area, stay at Pitt School Road. Do I have a motion to approve both of those? Mr. Harrison made the motion. Do I have a second?
I am, I'll second it only so, just to have discussion.
Okay.
So now that I've seconded it, now that we've made the decision not to send the Skybrook folks to Odell, I don't necessarily really think that making Odell smaller is any, any help. We can just keep these planning blocks 37, 39, 38, 41, 42. So I'd offer an amendment to the motion, if someone would wanna vote on that, that we just consider planning blocks 132, 133, and 134, which were moving the students from Harrisburg Elementary to Pitt School and not worry about the Boger move. If I remove the Boger? Remove the Boger move from it.
Okay. So Mr. Harrison, would you amend his motion?
From Harrisburg, as we originally done the motion. I'll accept that.
You'll amend your motion?
Yes.
And Barry, you'll?
I'll second.
Amend your second?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of the only elementary move being for the children in the area west of 49 or north of 49, depending on how you look at it, to stay at Pitt School Road?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Everybody good?
No.
Rob, my load is centered.
I think we have to keep room, if we have to move the Cox Mill people at some point in the future.
Oh, you wanted to move the kids out of Odell?
You wanna keep the feeder zones, if you can keep the feeder zones the same, that's, if we're moving a middle school, you move the elementary school.
Okay, so that concludes our open session. More to come.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to whatever your.
First of all, I wanna, excuse me, first of all, I just wanna thank you to staff and everyone who's stuck with us this far tonight. Okay, so we have, who made the motion to go and close?
I did.
Mr. Schumaker, who made the second? Ms. Carpenter?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
To convene in closed session, to consult with an attorney, hold on, if we can keep the noise down for a second, to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143, 318A3 and the other statutes as stated regarding personnel matters and other issues. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a 7-0. Good night to our viewing audience. Thank you for staying with us.